Good morning, everyone. If you can please remember to silence your phones, the meeting will begin in three, two, one.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I now call the meeting of the Code Enforcement Special magistrate to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, number one, and one of the
Welcome to the Hillsborough County Code Enforcement Specialist magistrate hearing. When addressing the special magistrate, please state your name, address, and speak clearly into the microphone. If you are planning to speak during this hearing, you must find the speaker's list located at the front door for the record. Presentations by the county, respondents, and opposition must be kept to a maximum of ten minutes each. Special magistrate may recess at twelve thirty and reconvene at one thirty to conclude its business if needed. The basic process for this hearing is as follows. Your case will be announced, and Ms. Meyer will conduct the oath of witness. Staff will present the evidence on your case, and then you'll be allowed to rebut that evidence and explain what has occurred. We'll close the hearing and announce a decision. All decisions are based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator, and the violator's history. I may ask questions and allow other witness testimony as necessary. If I issue an order for compliance, it is your responsibility to notify the code enforcement officer on or before the date ordered to demonstrate the violation has been corrected. Depending on my order, the code enforcement staff will may later have to conduct an inspection to see if you complied. If the staff believes you have not complied, you receive a notice in the mail. By law, you have ten days to contest that notice. Otherwise, it will be considered correct, and a lien may be filed against your property. If you have any questions, these rules are outlined by Hillsborough County Code and Ordinances and Laws, Chapter fourteen, Article two, Section fourteen. Any person who signs to appeal a decision of Code Enforcement Specialist magistrate will need a record of the proceedings. The record is comprised of testimony, evidence upon which an appeal is based. It is your responsibility to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made. By law, you have thirty days from the date of my order to appeal the special magistrate's decision to circuit court. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices.
All county staff who will be testifying must take the oath of witness. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. First case is on page one, number one, case number CE two one zero zero three four seven two. The owner is Navorti Lopez and Kimberly A. Lopez, location seventy one twenty five Fairview Park Drive. We have service. And Mr. Lopez is here, I believe. If you're here for this case, come, come on up. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Can you come up to the microphone? Is it on? Put your mask back on. You have to keep your mask on.
Keep the mask on?
Yes, please. Thank you. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state your name and address.
Neighbor Lopez, seventy one twenty five Fairview Park Drive, Tampa, Florida, three three six one nine.
Thank you. Do you recognize the property in the photo?
Ah, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm on the Guterres Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case was initially initiated in March of twenty twenty one. We had accumulations and inoperable vehicle. The accumulations are complied. However, this vehicle has been there since March twenty twenty one. Mr. Lopez has not registered or moved it.
Okay, sir, what would you like to tell me?
Uh, that's not my car. That's my son-in-law, and we have a court order. He can't come near the property. So if I can get a hold of him, so he can come and pick up the vehicle.
You have a court order for your son to not be able to come near the property?
Yeah, for my daughter, so he can't come near the the property. So, you know, I can't. What can I do?
You could have somebody else come and pick up the vehicle.
Yeah, but it isn't that a liability that it's like the vehicle's not mine.
But is it on your property, sir?
It's on my property.
Okay, so how much time do you think you need to get rid of the vehicle?
Uh, thirty days.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
No.
That one was really easy, so I don't want to cut you short, but.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay.
That was it.
No problem. I can do that. Sure. I rule, absolutely. I rule in case CE two one zero zero three four seven two, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day be assessed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Next case, please.
Next case is number two, case number CE two thousand nine three one one. The owner is Terry Martin Hilton, location four oh seven Hillside Drive. We have service. And Mr. Hilton is here. I apologize, Ms. Hilton. Good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And state your name and address.
My name is Terry Hilton. My address is eighty six oh five North Kickery Lane, River View, Florida, three three five seven eight.
And do you recognize the property in the photo?
I do. Thank you.
Officer?
Officer Chris Mass in Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, CE two thousand ninety three eleven. The property is located at four oh seven Hillside Drive, Saffner, Florida. The case started six eighteen twenty twenty. It's tenant occupied, not in foreclosure, and zone R C six. The violations cited that remain are accumulations, inoperable vehicles, roofs, and or parts thereof.
Don't see accumulations as a violation. Has that been complied, or is that?
There is accumulations of trash, junk, and debris all over the property.
Oh, sorry.
And the backyard is full of it.
Okay. And how many times have you been out there?
I have personally been out there probably half a dozen times. I was out there yesterday, and nothing's changed.
Same conditions?
Same, actually, maybe a little worse.
Okay, excellent. Ma'am, what would you like to tell me?
Well, I was out there, I want to say, two weeks ago. The vehicles that they have listed on this paper are not there. The, um, I mean, I get on their rear ends all the time. That, I don't even believe that boat is there. I mean, as for the vehicles, I don't know about the backyard. The backyard's all fenced in. And it was a fence problem, and I believe he was supposed to finish fixing that fence last night.
Okay, and the the roof issue?
That roof, it had a hole in it, and he was repairing the hole. There was a tarp over it. The tarp is gone. All that's been fixed. Yeah.
Okay, so it's your testimony that everything out there in regards to inoperable vehicles, the roof repair and accumulations has been taken care of?
I couldn't tell you about the accumulations, honestly. I mean, I stopped by there today and go look for myself.
Okay.
As for, you know, the two vehicles they have listed on this paper, those are gone. I haven't seen them in about a year.
Oh, okay, so no more vehicles?
I, in the front yard, I couldn't tell you. I need to go look for myself. I haven't been there in two weeks.
Okay, this case has been going on since six eighteen of twenty twenty?
Right. The last time that I had got a letter from code enforcement, um, I called the number, called the man, the code enforcement person, and I got his email, his voicemail, I'm sorry. And it said that he no longer works for y'all, that if I'd never heard anything from y'all, to just forget about it. That was on his voicemail.
If you didn't hear anything from anybody, just forget about it.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound just a little strange?
Well, I don't know. Look, here's a registered letter, okay? This is a registered letter. This.
I understand how that process works, ma'am. Thank you.
But, you know, I showed up anyhow.
I understand, and I appreciate that. So then we get to the bottom of it, and we get it taken care of.
Right.
So when was the last time you were at the property?
Two weeks ago.
So you haven't been there in two weeks, but you're assuming that the issues here have been resolved within that time?
Uh.
And you just want to go take a look? I'm just.
Thanks a lot, myself.
All right, let's make just a crazy assumption that the accumulations are not gone, and the vehicles are still there. How much time do you think it would take you?
Thirty days, please.
Okay. Mr. Vasano, do you have any concerns with the thirty days on this, being that there's no life safety issues?
I think thirty days is sufficient, considering the amount of debris on the property.
Okay, terrific. We got a deal.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a great day.
Fantastic, thank you. I rule in case CE two zero 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 nine three one one, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violations and the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Turn to page two, number four, case number CE two one zero zero three one two seven. The owner is Gordon W. Bartle and Gail Bartle, twenty six twelve Regal Oaks Lane. We have service. And Mr. Bartle is here. Good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address.
Gordon Bartle. Uh, my current living address is thirty three oh twenty five Blanton Road, Blanton, Florida.
And the zip?
Three three. Three three oh two five. Oh, the zip is three three six G three. Lots of threes.
Okay, thank you. And do you recognize that property in the photo?
Yeah, it's not a very good photo. I've got better ones. That is the property we're talking about.
Excellent.
Twenty six twelve Regal Oaks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, officer.
Good morning. Sarah Franco with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. The property in question is located at twenty six twelve Regal Oaks Lane, Lutes, Florida, three three five five nine, owned by Gordon and Gail Bartle. The property is not occupied due to being vacant land. The property is not in foreclosure. The property was first inspected on March tenth, twenty twenty one. Uh, there have been eleven site visits conducted on this property, and two violations out of the original three still remain. The first violation, which remains present, is accessory use without a primary, and the second violation is fences. Both are visible from the roadway, and there has been no progress completed over the course of almost eleven months. During my inspections, I did not call in contact with the property owner due to being vacant land, nobody on site. I conducted my final inspection on February eighth, two thousand twenty two, and photographs were taken at the time for this hearing.
And when were the last these taken, sir? Give me one second. Okay. Um, what is the accessory without primary use?
Um, there is a SUV and a trailer parked on the property.
Okay. And have those been there the duration since March tenth of twenty twenty one?
Yes, sir.
And they're still there?
Yes, sir.
That's not true. Sir? I said, I'll give you your opportunity in just a minute, okay?
Sure.
Thank you. In regards to the fences, is the condition exactly the same since?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's been the same duration as well. Okay, sir, now it's your turn. What would you like to tell me?
I've had this property for about thirty years. I lived on it with my wife. Up until three years ago, when we demolished the house with the intention of building a house, another house. But we decided instead to build up in Dade City area where I live now, and we turned this into a park. We're thinking of, in our, uh, in our wills, we're gonna try to donate. We're working on it right now to donate this. It's eight acres, actually, about five acres open, about three acres in woods, which you can see in the back. And it's gonna be a park. I'm gonna try to donate it to, uh, this is minor stuff. But as far as, I have a question. Uh, I hear about all these citations and all of this. This is the first time I ever got anything on this issue. I have no mail. I've had no warnings. So all these, or all these occurrences that I'm hearing about, this is the first time that I've heard about them.
Ladies, can you confirm that we've properly noticed for this? Okay, we posted. Thank you. Okay, so we posted the property, sir. So I understand that you might not have a past, the history or knowledge of this at this point, but here we are, so let's see if we can come to a resolution.
Being by post, I'd like to understand what's going on.
Posted at the site, at the property, yes.
Where? On a sign? In my mail?
I wasn't there, sir. I don't know where it was, but the officer might be able to tell you.
All right.
Um, it was posted in the mailbox?
Yeah, that's this. That's what I got.
Correct.
About two weeks ago. You're talking about almost.
And then when I went back on the eighth, it was gone, because I checked the mailbox to make sure it was.
I only had one, but I'm talking, you're talking about things going back months.
Correct.
I have no postings, no nothing. This is the only thing I got about two weeks ago.
Okay, sir. So in regards to the issues of fences and accessory, accessory use without primary use? You've seen the pictures. How long will it take you to take care of the fence issue and remove the?
Before I do that, could I ask a question or two, because this is a little concerning to me. I'm not, I looked, I went online with the two oh two oh four, whatever the section is, to fully understand it. You have a blur, you know, one sense. I figured there might be more. I've got eight acres here. I've got much better pictures. The car is a seventy thousand dollar Toyota four-wheel, which I leave there. Uh, I drive it two or three times a week. It is, has not been sitting there, never used. I leave it there because I need a four-wheel. When I'm maintaining the back in the woods, occasionally, a little tractor I have there will get stuck, and you need a four-wheel. I've got two or three vehicles, so I leave it there. And where I've left it is at the end of where the concrete driveway was, where the house was. I can go back a thousand feet and put it where you see the woods back there, and no one can see it at all. I couldn't see it. Am I, does this, I'd like to see, uh, that law in its completion. I can't find it. It's been an hour and a half. You don't just put in that number and get that law. There are about ten thousand laws, and I couldn't find it. Does that law say that I can't keep a very fine car and eight acres to maintain like a park on my property because I don't have a house there?
First of all, sir, it's not a park yet. So, but I'll ask Mr. Vasano to address, sir, I'll ask Mr. Vasano to address your question. Okay?
Oh, is that it? I have no discretion here?
No, you asked a question in regards to that particular line item. I'm gonna have Mr. Vasano clarify it for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Vasano.
If he leaves me his email address, I'd be more than happy to mail him, to email him this section. The other part is, you know, you're talking about notice, and he wants to play ignorance here. Uh, we know this based on the property of Fraser and Tax Collector's website. Um, he needs to keep that up to date if he wants to be a prudent property owner. The second part is, is accessory use without primary? He tore down the house. He plans on all these plans, but it is what it is, and you cannot, we've run into this before, where people use them as parking lots. You cannot store anything on the property without a primary residence on the property. The law is very specific and clear on that.
So an eight?
Okay.
On eight acres?
It doesn't matter on if it's, if it's two hundred square foot price of property or a hundred acres, what the use is of property.
Understand.
What is storing there? Leave it there permanently for a week, three days?
Sir, you can look in the dictionary for storing if you don't have a, know what storage means.
That's pretty smart ass. That's not what I meant.
Sir, we need you to speak into the microphone.
I just heard that, uh, that trailer hasn't moved, and the car hasn't moved. The car I move and drive and keep washed up every week. I drive it around, I bring it back. That trailer comes and goes when I bring my mower to mow. It doesn't stay there all the time. I drop it off. I mow, I pick it up two or three days later and bring it back to the other property.
Understand. Oh, you have another, I'm sorry, do you have another property?
Yeah, I've got forty acres.
Okay, well, maybe you want to store the pieces of the car and the trailer there.
Well, I can't go back and forth and back and forth. I have a John Deere up there. I'm trying to make this doable. I'm just, I'm just curious on all this property, which we're maintaining like a park, whether it's technically a park or not, it is to me. But I, the law says that I can't occasionally leave the utility trailer. I'm not abandoning it. I've got a, you know, seventy thousand dollar car, which I'm not abandoning.
It's not abandonment issue, sir. It's just a primary use. There's no, there's no prime, there's no building there. There's no home there now, and so you can't have it there. So between that and the fence issue, how long will it take for you to remove the vehicle and trailer from the property?
One more question, since I.
Sir, go ahead.
Sir, are you telling me I can't bring that trailer down, take the tractor off, use it for two days, and then bring the trailer out again?
Sir, what I'm telling you is based on the condition, accessory without primary use, you cannot store the vehicle and the trailer there, which is a condition that's been there since March of twenty twenty?
It hasn't been there. I take it back.
The initial violation started on March twenty twenty one. I'm not gonna argue this point with you at this point. I'm asking you, and I'm giving you, sir.
I know what store means. I just want to know if I can use the equipment that I have without violating it at all.
I'm asking you, how long will it take for you to make the repairs to the fence, which, as you can see by the picture, there are holes in the fence? And how long will it take you to remove the vehicle and the trailer from your property?
I'm on my third bid on the fence. I built the fence about seven years ago, and it started to rot here and there. And as the boards have come off, I've taken them off. That's about, that's a good example of where I've taken the boards off. My first contractor, if you tried to build anything these days, you'd probably run into yourself. He couldn't get the, he couldn't get the supplies in time, and I waited two or three months. I had to break that contract, go to the next guy. The next guy wasn't able to get supplies through another, he told me, four or five months, getting the type of wood that I need for this, very thick, high-quality wood. I finally got a third contractor, who I have faith in, who just put a half-mile fence up in Dade City around the forty acres to the pit of the job. He doesn't usually come down here, but I talked to him a couple of days ago, told him at this situation, and he will do it. And he'll, he's gonna try to be able to do it within thirty days, but I can't control him entirely. But he'll, he'll get the job done.
Excellent. Okay.
I hope.
Okay, so you need thirty days, and in regards to the car and the trailer, that you can do within thirty days as well?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
Now, in material that I'm getting, I'd like to know a more specific answer to my question about, I just don't know if I can even go down there with equipment now for a couple of days. Uh, it's been made to sound like I abandoned this stuff here. It's never moved. It's a work in process, you know, when you get a, when you get a lawn service. They park their equipment there for a few hours sometimes. This is a big piece of property, so it takes a couple of days sometimes. If I have it there a couple of days with my tractor, it's all right, or do I have to move it every single time, sixty miles north, sixty miles back? I'd like that addressed if it can be done. It's just common sense stuff. It just seems like.
It is, absolutely, sir. You're absolutely right. It's common sense stuff. So if you use that and you apply that to this case, the truck and the trailer cannot be there in the same position every time the officer comes by. It, it's just not, it doesn't make sense. This case has been going on for a year and a half, sir. This isn't like it happened in the last two weeks.
All right.
I'm gonna give you thirty days to finish removing the vehicle and the trailer and repairs the fence.
All right. My only, only thing I have to say that has not been there continuously since that time, you, officer, must have been very fortunate.
Thank you, sir, for coming down from Dade City. I know it was a travel. Thank you very much. I move in case CE two one zero zero three one two seven, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County Code and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant thirty days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Turn to page three, number six, case number CE two thousand two two eight eight. The owners are Donald Paul Lively and Tanya Lee Lively, thirty two oh two Wheeler Street. We have service. And we do have someone signed in. Good morning, raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
And state your name and address.
Donald Lively, thirty-two oh two Wheeler Street, Dover, Florida, three three five two seven.
Thank you. Carmine, it's not.
Could you bring it up on the big screen? No problem.
Okay, do you recognize that property?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, Officer Sweeney.
Good morning, Dennis Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This particular case started in February seventeenth of twenty twenty by Officer Rowan. The property at the time had a commercial vehicle, a commercial trailer, and a utility trailer parked in the county right away in front of the home. Officer Rowan also cited the property for accumulations and protective treatment on the dwelling. The commercial vehicle and the utility trailer have been removed, so those two conditions are in compliance as of my last visit a few days ago when I updated my photos. However, as you can see, the structure is in need of a protective treatment, painting, coating, you know, siding, or something to meet the county codes and ordinances that are in the books as of today. So, keep in mind, as I mentioned, this case started in February of twenty twenty, and here we are in February of twenty twenty-two. So, this is kind of where we're at at this point as of February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, sir, would you like to tell me?
Oh, well, as Mr. Sweeney just left out the fact that my property is on commercial, and as this case has been going on for quite a while, as he stated, I've had five, six, seven different county enforcement people out there to look at it. In twenty twenty, it was moved to a case of Christina Zorn. She used to be a county enforcement officer, and she was going to work with me on it and do the paint your heart out thing with it, and we worked for months and months and months, and that never happened. The reason that it's not painted right now, the accumulation is really not, I mean, it's, I don't think it's that big a deal, there was one picture there that showed on the side yard next to my Jeep, where the refrigerator and some of the accumulation is on the trailer that I'm fixing, fixed it behind my Jeep, it's fixing to go to the scrapyard. Right, the situation I'm in, as I explained to Mr. Sweeney, that I'm in right now, is if you go look at the roof of the house, I just spent in the last two years, sixteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for a brand-new roof. And if you look around the roof and everything, I'm not showing you those pictures, but if you look around the roof and everything, I have been replacing wood, the house is a hundred and three years old. I'm replacing some of the wood around the, that has to be done before I paint it. I mean, there's another one that you can see a good shot of the roof, and then that whole two-by-six, and all that wood that's up next to the bed, that's all new wood, you see the two-by-eight at the very front of the four, that's all new. So, there's other wood that needs to be replaced before I can paint, or before I paint it. So, that's what I'm working on now, and I am, and I really hate to have to bring all this up and everything, but I'm, right now, I'm out of money. I just spent sixteen thousand five hundred for that new roof, if you showed a picture on the side of the house, I just spent ten thousand eight hundred dollars for a new AC unit, and all ducking it inside the house. And on Feb, on August twenty-ninth, I spent twenty-one thousand dollars to bury my oldest son at thirty-eight years old, who died in a accident, accidental drowning.
I'm sorry for your loss.
I'm out of money, I mean, that's where I'm at right now, I'm struggling to make things happen. I've gotten two bids on the house, one up to paint it, one, one of them was a little over five thousand, the other one was thirty-eight hundred, I want to paint it with a good product that I'm not going to have to have any problems with, I got the painted, sorted that I want to do. So, for about a year and a half, Christina, with the code enforcement, is, was in charge of a special part of them, that we were going to, that we were going to paint it, we were going to paint it, we were going to paint it, and then they said no. So, you get all the stuff done and all the rotten ruined stuff that needs to happen to it, then maybe we'll talk about it, but it doesn't look like it. Now, I've heard that she's no longer with them, and now she is with them, so I don't really know what it, what it is with them. I've talked to Dennis several times about it, I've made phone calls and talked to him about it, I'm not trying to run away from the fact that it needs to be painted, but that's where I am right now at this point in time.
Mr. Bassano, did we make some kind of commitment from the county to paint this gentleman's home?
I, this is Carmine Bassano, I can attest to that, there is a probability, but he just said the reason why they didn't proceed with the painting, and he's even given testimony that there's still rotted wood and materials that need to be taken care of before they take the effort and supplies and effort and money to paint something that's not paintable, or should not be put paint over, if it's rotting wood, you're only, you're just putting a Band-Aid over something that's far worse.
Sure.
So, there's a possibility, I mean, Christine does, Zion still works with us, and, but had he completed the project, he possibly could be an applicant for Paint Your Heart Out.
Okay, all right, sir, now that we've established that, in regards to the accumulations, and obviously this protective treatment, how long do you think it'll take for you to get this completed now that we're at this stage?
I wish I could say I'd have the money in two months or thirty days or something like that, but right now, I'm struggling with it, as I, I told you, I've spent somewhere around six thousand dollars to replace some of the wood and stuff that you see there as well. I spent three thousand dollars in the, since this has all happened, to termite it and do all that kind of stuff, so it's not like I'm not doing anything there, the trailer, Dennis told you, is gone, the accumulation, the trailer, everything that needed to be gone is gone, as far as, except for the house being painted.
Okay, I'm willing to work with you here in regards to giving you some extra time to get the, the house painted, we can get, we can get it on the clock. If you can give me a timeline, which will take you to finish up the accumulations, can you get that done the next week or two?
Yeah, I can do that, I mean, I'm working on that now, I mean, the side yard where you see the Jeep right behind it, there's a trailer, and I've got the refrigerator and the stuff on it as well. I mean, the one lawnmower that he, it's talking about was sitting right where that garbage can used to sit, and that's gone. I mean, I have another lawnmower in the backyard, but that's what I use to mow the grass with and stuff, I mean, it's not a junk lawnmower.
You've got to have something to mow the grass with, I understand that.
Yeah, and that's another thing, I mean, it's on commercial, and he has done, Mr. Sweeney's told me it's less than an acre, well, my survey shows it as being one point oh one acre. So, I was going to put the storage trailer that I had right down the driveway in front of my motorhome that's sitting right there, my Class C motorhome that's sitting right there, but he told me I couldn't do it, even though I'm commercial, even though I'm at one acre, I can't do it there, so I have, I'm having to pay for storage on that somewhere.
Okay, Officer Sweeney, if we have a short timeline on the accumulations, do you have any concerns about giving some extra time to complete the painting of this job, as long as we've got a time?
Yeah, I have no problem with the timeframe on painting, but let me read what Officer Zion put in the notes in this case.
Please.
In June, on June twenty-third, twenty twenty, Officer Zion stated, she received a phone call from Jerry from Paint Your Heart Out Tampa Bay, and he said the home was beyond the scope of what Paint Your Heart Out abilities could do to paint this home. So, Mr. Lively requested an extension of time, which she granted thirty more days as far as that extension went. So, that's where she was at with that particular situation. I know that usually when we extend to help folks out with certain programs, usually there's two criterias to that. Usually it's because of a hardship financially, or usually it's because they're a military veteran who needs help, and that's what our program is out there for. Not to say Mr. Lively may not need the help financially, especially with the situation with his son, but as far as timeframe, as I mentioned earlier, keep in mind, this has been, you know, since February of twenty twenty. So, you know, that's where we're at today.
Okay.
Well, that said, also, I mean, if I may say, I mean, everybody knows what's been going on in the year twenty twenty, nothing's been done. I mean, it ain't like that I could have done it, and you guys were shut down, everything was shut down for twenty twenty.
I absolutely understand that, sir, and I'll take that into consideration.
He keeps alluding to the fact that it's February of twenty twenty, well, I mean, twenty twenty, the whole year, you can pretty much wipe out, the way I feel, but that's just my opinion.
Understand, okay, well, it looks like here we have an understanding, and I'll take a shorter timeline to get the accumulation to have, Officer Sweeney, come back out and verify that, probably fourteen days or so, and then I'll give you some extra time on the protective treatment to get the process done, hopefully you can find some help or get some friends or something to get that taken care of, okay?
Aight.
All right, thank you, sir. Hi, ruling case CE two zero 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 two two eight eight, that based on the events presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes and ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant a two-part motion for item PM twelve point one accumulations, I grant fourteen days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. For item R eleven point seven point three protective treatment, I grant ninety days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred dollars per day be assessed. Okay, sir, so you have fourteen days to complete the accumulation process and get that cleaned up, and then ninety days to get the protective treatment.
I heard you state that the ninety days after that, it would be a hundred dollars a day, it can, I mean, can we just do ninety days and then look at, look at it then as well, or does, is that just?
Officer Sweeney will come out and look at it at ninety days and check it for you, and if it's complete, then the case is done.
That's, that's my concern, if it's complete, then absolutely everything's great, but if it's not complete, you're going to fine me a hundred dollars a day?
That is correct, sir, that would be a hundred dollars a day. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next case, please.
Next case is on page four, number seven, case number CE twenty-one hundred four four seven three, the owner is Ismael Cruz Jr., forty-eight thirty-six Edmund Court, we have service. And Mr. Cruz is here.
Morning.
Raise your right hand, please, sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address.
Ismael Cruz Jr., four eight three six Edmund Court, Dover, Florida, three three five two seven.
Do you recognize property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dennis Sweeney, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, this property is owner occupied. Property is not in foreclosure, property is on RSC six. During routine driving on this particular road, due to five other code enforcement cases, I observed this property in the state that it's in, as you can see in this photo, you have a commercial dump trailer, you have multiple stacks of shingles, roofing shingles, which shows us that a couple of things, one, a business is being operated from this location, a roofing business, and two, that they're storing their supplies. As of February eighth, this is the balance of what is left on location as far as roofing shingles, and I'm not sure what those are, shovels or, or something, I'm not real sure, tools of some sort that they use, as you can see, ladder in the background against the fence. However, we have had a previous case for the same issues prior to this case. They ceased and then they started back again, so this is where we're at today.
Okay, do we have, do we get a ruling on that case, is this considered a repeat violator, or is this a?
No, we, that case came in compliance before it needed to come before the board, and I didn't process this as a repeat at that time, so after today's date, with this case, it will be processed in the future as a repeat violator.
Okay, all right. Sir, what would you like to tell me?
The black trailer that was in the picture, it's not ours, and it's not there no more.
Okay, terrific.
The shingles that are in the back, most of the shingles are gone, the shovels, I think they might still be there, but the shingles aren't there no more. We don't use the zone for roofing business, my dad works for a company in Lutz called Rescue Roofing, and that's what, you know, whenever he keeps over, he keeps it, and then he can sell it as material. That, the trailer's no longer there, the shingles, well, I mean, other than the shovels, I have to see when I get home if they're still there, but those can be moved, and I have pictures like, front, it's clean.
On your phone?
Yeah.
If you, if you give them to us on the phone, then I have to keep your phone, and it looks like a nice phone, so I don't think you want to do that, but I'll take your word for it, and be honest with you, Mr. Sweeney's going to come out and check it out. If it's your testimony that you're in compliance and all these things have been taken care of, then we'll just do a short turn and have Mr. Sweeney come out and double-check it, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I had a question.
Sure.
Okay, so with trailer use for the house, we have two trailers, we have, both of them are to move equipment and stuff, but they're not for like, you know, I guess like dumping or anything like that, is this okay to have them if they're both, you know, registered and have a valid tag?
The, the situation with that, he mentioned that they're, they're used to move equipment, that suggests that those trailers are commercial-braided sized trailers, in the RSC zoning district, commercial vehicles are prohibited altogether, whether it's a trailer or a tractor-trailer. So, that would not be allowed.
Okay. Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. All right, any other, anything else we can address, or, I don't want to cut you short, but it sounds like this one's pretty easy, so.
I'm okay, I just thought it was going to be a lot more than this. Yeah.
No problem, thank you, sir, I appreciate you taking care of it.
You have a good day.
You too.
Hold up, hold up, would you be making a ruling, or do you just want me to go and make a site?
No, I'm going to rule, I'm just going to give it a seven-day turn. Yeah, and then, and then he'll be able to come out within that timeframe and check it.
Okay.
I rule in case CE two one zero zero four four seven three, that based on the events presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County codes and ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity violation, the actions taken by a violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance, if compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of one hundred and fifty dollars per day be assessed. All right, so Mr. Sweeney's going to come out and check it in seven days, and if everything's gone, then that's, we're good.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, sir, thanks for coming out. Next case, please.
Next case is number eight, case number CE two zero zero one two seven eight seven. The owners are Mariah D. Gillespie and Melissa D. Davis, sixty thirty-two West Farkas Road, we have service. And we have someone here signed in.
Melissa could not be here today, so I brought her.
Will you both be testifying?
Pardon?
Will you be testifying as well?
You know, I'm just here for morals.
Okay, okay. Ms. Gillespie, can you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Completely.
And
Pardon?
Pull the microphone down, there you go.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a hard of hearing, so this is good.
Okay, and what's your name, state your name and address?
Mariah Diane Gillespie, six zero three two West Farkas, F A R K A S Road, Plant City, Florida, three three five six seven.
Thank you, and do you recognize the property in the photo?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, Officer Bowling.
Good morning, Donald K. Bowling, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case began on eight twenty-one twenty twenty, there were several other violations that have since been corrected. The remaining violation after ten visits is outside open stores, where there is a repeat violation from code case CE one six zero one zero nine two two, and the board order was dated for seven twenty seventeen. That being the, apparently the cargo, three cargo containers out on the property. I have met with a young lady who, steady shoe was a respondent, excuse me, and was advised that, she was told that she had every right to have that there by an architect. I don't know who the architect was, and again, the last visit was on one twenty-seven twenty twenty-two. But also, this is ASC one zoning. But also, this is ASC one zoning.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gillespie, what would you like to tell me?
Pardon?
What would you like to tell me? It's your turn.
I, the architect, well, first of all, when I sent in my initial completion of the, whatever I filled out or my friend filled out on the thing, a digital written on, on the computer, that it, you know, my name and yada, yada, yada. And I sent the report from the architect engineer. And it stated that I had to put down tie downs. And I brought pictures of those that are the tie downs, which were there since last year. I complied in, on, the latest completion was this past Monday. If you need all this explanation of where and when and what.
Excuse me. Ladies, could I ask you to please pull your mask up over your nose? Thank you. And you do pull your mask up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. It slips down all the time.
So just to confirm, you were, you were found in violation for this particular violation back in 2017? And then comply?
They weren't there in 2017. What was the initial charge?
Same, same, same issue, outside open storage. How long have you had these?
I'm not sure. I bought them separately. I did not buy them all at once. I had.
Was the original one?
On a place where it's like I've got my shed. And in front of that, I think I have that circle that, you know, one of the things that they accused me of was having, and I complied, and I've complied this time. The paperwork, you know, went to Martha Gonzalez. And I think it was in zoning and permits. And she told me that this week. I didn't know that it didn't. But I have all the, the paperwork here that everything communicated between you guys and me.
Okay, so I see here where you've essentially added tie downs to the containers, but the containers are still not allowed on the property based on the zoning. So how long?
Well, that's not what I was told, you know.
I understand, and I'm sorry you got some poor information, but we're here in front of code enforcement now and they're saying that they're not allowed on the property. So my question is, how long will it take you to move and get, move them off of your property so that you can be in compliance?
I have no idea. I, I live on an income of less than $13,000 a year. And it's difficult for me. And I have no idea how much it would cost to move them because they are full. And I was told that, get the architect to, you know, tell me what to do about the containers in order to get the permits for the containers. I've got, I got private, privacy fence, like a white privacy fence. I've got it on two sides of my property, which is my adjoining neighbors on the west side and on the north side.
Are you, are you trying to permit these?
Yes.
Okay. Have you submitted for permit?
Well, I, I've tried to, I've got, I sent all the paperwork in. Here, you may look.
Do you have, is that an extra copy? I don't want to take your only copy, so.
Oh, no. It's all in the computer. I just had them printed out.
Okay. If you'd hand that to the ladies, they'll pass it around to me.
Mr. Lorenson?
Yes.
I have the older case pulled up. If you'd like to have some more information about what that was about.
Please.
The outside open storage was not the same kind of storage. It was, it says items stacked and stored outside on the property, including washer dryer, televisions, refrigerator, wood and furniture.
Okay.
And that was the outside open storage in that case.
Okay. Thank you.
If you look at the pictures, that shows that the thing where they charged me with stuff like she just said, and it was removed over, well over a year ago, maybe more. I have memory issues. The paperwork we submitted was on the computer and we filled it out. And we put pictures in there, but they couldn't download them. The pictures, I just took those the other day. And I have pictures that were taken initially when I put the tie downs on the, on the containers. The containers, you can see how much they weigh. It would, in my estimate, I was planning to call the meteorologist to find out how much wind it would take to overturn them or, you know. And to me, it would take, according to the foundation, would take 350 mile per hour wind to dislocate them.
Well, I appreciate your due diligence, ma'am, but unfortunately, you're going to have to have an engineer create a report and submit that as part of your permit application. I'm looking at the materials here.
It went, we, I sent it, I thought, to the code enforcement, but it went to permits and zoning. And it went to Martha Gonzalez. I spoke with her this week several times. And I tried to call her and get in touch with her today, but I couldn't get in touch with her to have her send over the original copies. You can see on September 15th, 2021, is when we submitted the paperwork for the, the permits. And I sent the thing from the architect engineer. And all his response was, was to put the tie downs. And they were front and back and every 10 feet between. And they, I usually can see the pictures that, you know, that that has been done. And that's what the architect or engineer, whatever they are.
Yes, ma'am. Your initial inquiry back in 2021 and 2020 to the permitting off, to the permitting department, was in regards to the zone of your property, which is ASC one. And you were requesting whether or not you could put a manufactured home on the facility. And they emailed you back and let you know that that was not permitted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can you see one on the property?
Can you? I'm sorry?
On the property?
No, I'm just, just talking about your documentation. That's not our, that's not the violation that I'm here to discuss today. So unless there's something you want to disclose, I don't have any issue with that.
I would love to put one on.
But they won't let you. So if you do that, or you're going to be right back in front of me again.
See the house? I lived there. And it's over 100 years old. And it's with multiple hurricanes, et cetera, et cetera, windstorms. I have to, I need to clean up the yard because the last windstorm we had was, what do you call it? A lot of limbs fell, but they've all been collected and gotten rid of. Now I just got, need to blow off the weeds to a pile and, and get them out of the way.
Okay. I've looked through the paperwork, ma'am, and it looks like you, you've submitted materials to the county, but I don't see anywhere where a permit's been issued. So my, at this point, I'm going to rule and give you a timeline in which it needs to be, they need to be moved. Or within that timeline, you have to complete the permitting process. Okay? So they have to actually issue a permit to you to say that you can have them. Just because, I mean, I understand the, the general discussion in regards to tie downs and things. And having an engineer report, it sounds like you're going through the process, so.
Yes, ma'am.
But until you have the permit, they're not, they're not allowed.
I'm compliant.
Understand.
I was just under the impression that it was my property and.
Well, it is your property.
Yeah, over, over an acre. And I thought, you know, I, I had a lot of furniture. I had another house that I accumulated a lot of furniture and situations. But they've all been resolved according to the engineer's status or paperwork.
Right. Understand. So my, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to make a ruling in regards to your violation. I'm going to give you 90 days to get that completed. So you'll have to make sure you follow up with your, the permitting processes with the ladies that you've already contacted to make sure that.
What is the, what did you say the timeframe and?
90, 90 days.
And what does that include? What?
So, so as part of my, so you're going to be, have the opportunity to complete the permitting process. If it's permitted within that timeframe, then the violation would go away.
Okay.
If you don't have a permit within 90 days, you have to remove them.
Okay.
Okay? So that's kind of how it works.
Yeah. Well, I, I.
But that'll give you some time to try to go through the process to be able to.
Right.
Retain them. Because I know you've already spent some money with the tie downs and things like.
Oh, yeah. And I had.
Looks like you're trying to do the right thing.
Put him in because he's.
Well, that was nice of him.
He's very, he's very good to me. But.
You got to hang under those.
He stole my boat and motor, but anyway.
Well, that doesn't sound like he's very nice, but maybe that's a trade.
You know, I don't think.
That's a love-hate relationship. Okay. Well, all right. So I'm going to go ahead and make the ruling for that. And then I'll give you 90 days to get that process done, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. I rule in case CE 20012787. That based on the evidence presented, I find the property is again in violation of Hillsborough County Codes and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation and of the previous order dated 0407/2017. It constitutes a repeat violation as defined in Florida statutes. Further, I grant 90 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $125 per day be assessed. Additionally, a fine of $125 per day per occurrence be imposed for any repeat violations after compliance is achieved.
Okay, now what, what are you?
Ma'am, I'm happy to explain it to you now that my ruling is complete. So you have 90 days to either get the permit and then this goes away or remove them from your property. After 90 days, Officer Bowling is going to come back out and check and see if they're still there or if you have a permit. If you have a permit, you're good. If you don't have a permit and they're still on the property, then you would be fined $125 a day until they're removed.
The 90 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I live on a very skinny income.
I totally understand. Yes, ma'am. So you have 90 days. There's no fees occurring between now and 90 days. Okay? All right, Ms. Gillespie.
And I have my pictures and the?
You cannot, unfortunately. The material that you gave me has to remain as part of the evidence on the case. Okay?
Want the envelope?
No, that's okay. But thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. And all of you. You too.
Next case, please.
Turn to page six, number 11. Case number CE 20013831. The owner is Todd L. Sapolsky II, 506 Avocado Circle. And we have service. Good morning, sir. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And state your name and address.
Todd L. Sapolsky, 506 Avocado, Brandon, Florida, 33510.
Thank you. Do you recognize the property in the photo?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Officer Harwell?
Hey, good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case originated on September 10th of 2020. Only has one violation. It's that little white car to the right you see. And it's in op. And I've talked to the property owner twice. I'm not sure why he's not registering it.
Okay. Sounds pretty simple. Sir, what would you like to tell me?
The car's been removed.
That's even, you guys are making my day.
Yeah, I cut it short. It's been removed. It's no longer there.
Fantastic. So we can have a quick turn. Officer come out and check it out. We're ready to go. Thank you for coming down. I appreciate it. Absolutely. I rule in case CE 20013831. That based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County Codes and Ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on gravity violation, the actions taken by the violator and violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $150 per day be assessed. All right, officer, we'll come back and check in a week.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out. Next case, please.
Turn to page seven, number 14. Case number CE 2201129. The violator is United Dominion Realty. And the location, I guess, is on the county right of way. And we have service. Good morning, sir. You can, you can pull the microphone up. There you go. And raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
And state your name and address.
My name is Daniel Pola. I'm the community director at 1701 Lake Chapman Drive, Brandon, Florida, 33510.
Thank you.
Officer? Nope, we're still waiting on a verification. Turned us off again, Mr. Pisano. I hit the button.
And do you recognize that property?
Yes, that's the property I'm in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Charles Harwell, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. We are just here for a ruling. The violation's already been complied. This is the Lakewood Place Apartment Complex. That is off the website. You can see it's a large complex. So the address is 1701 Lake Chapman Drive. What they're doing is when they evict a tenant, they remove their belongings from the structure, from the apartment, and they put it out.
Put it back on the street.
Yeah, for 24 hours or a little bit more. And then they do clean it up, right? But during that time, we were getting numerous complaints. So, and then it obviously goes across the sidewalk. So the decided conditions are accumulations and nuisance conditions. So, you know, so, but again.
I'm assuming that that means that this has been taken care of. This is just.
Yeah, but it's ongoing. You know, it's ongoing. So.
Okay.
They do clean it up. But again, we have to deal with it in that timeframe.
Understand. Okay. Sir?
Yes, so we've had a lot of evictions, unfortunately, within the last year. Obviously, Mr. Harwell just started citing us for this recently. I think the last couple of times, January 11th, and then, which he just came to, you know, saying he got complaints in the office. He didn't cite us that time, but this time he cited us for it. And just like last time, we had it cleaned up. So I went back and forth with Mr. Harwell by email this week. And, you know, he recommended maybe we can dump it by the dumpster inside the community. So it's not outside. And I agreed we can do that. We actually did that with one of our evictions before we started putting it in this grass area right there. Well, we hired a vendor to do it. When the vendor did dump it those last two times, they did put it on the grass area, Well, we hired a vendor to do it. When the vendor did dump it those last two times, they did put it on the grass area, not on the sidewalk or the road, but obviously as people, you know, go through the stuff. You, you saw the pictures. It, it ran into the sidewalk, so, um, so we agreed we won't do that again. Um, but the last time we did put it by the dumpster, we even, um, informed the tenant that was evicted, what time the vendor was showing up to put their stuff there. Um, the nephew of one of the residents or ex-residents stopped, uh, one of our maintenance, uh, man that was on the golf cart who was not involved with the eviction at all and almost got an altercation with him over it. So our company recommended, well, maybe you can put it, you know, in this area right outside so to kind of keep them away from the property. But if it's becoming such a problem, because I know Mr. Harwell had numerous complaints about this from our residents, people passing by, people that knew the people getting evicted. And so did we, and we want to try to avoid that. So we tried to get some clarification from the Hillsborough County Sheriff where they would like to us to places. They didn't have any recommendation. Mr. Harwell emailed me and couldn't understand why we were doing what we were doing. But that was it. It's because the last time we did it inside by the dumpster, we had an issue where one of our maintenance men was almost assaulted by a relative of a person getting evicted, so. Um, but, um, you know, we'll figure out a way around that problem.
Okay, terrific. Sounds like you've got a plan. Obviously, there's a definitely a hazard for both pedestrian and vehicular traffic if it's out there in the right of way, so.
Yeah, it won't happen again.
Sounds like you've got a solution. Okay, terrific. Well, I understand that as part of this ruling, that kind of puts you on notice so that if it happens again, you'd be considered.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's kind of why they're going through the process at this point, but I understand you guys have worked it out and hopefully it won't be there anymore.
Yeah, it won't be there again.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming out and the explanation as well.
All right, thanks.
I rule in case CE two two zero zero one one two nine, that based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County codes of ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. Compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $200 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Turn to page nine, number seventeen, case number CE twenty one oh one five six four two. The owner is Pacifica Bayou LLC, location one oh three oh five Zachary Circle. And the, uh, specific location is one oh four oh eight Zachary Circle Apartment two eighty one, and we have service. Good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. You can pull, pull it down.
Pull it all the way to, there you go.
There you go. And state your name and address.
Julia Martinez, and the address is ten zero three zero five Zachary Circle. Riverview, Florida. Three three six five seven eight.
Are you the property manager?
I'm in substitute of her. She's auto maternity.
Okay, and do you recognize the photo? Thank you.
Good morning, Officer Sandler. Keep microphones, sir. I'm great. How are you?
Good, good. I'm Code Enforcement Officer Leon Sallor, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Property in question is located at one zero four zero eight Zachary Circle Apartment two eighty one, Riverview, Florida. It is owned by Pacifica Bayou LLC. Property is not in foreclosure. Property was first inspected on January sixth, twenty twenty one. It was cited for several violations. Uh, as of my last inspection on February eighth of this year, smoke detector was the only violation that remained.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, what would you like to tell me?
That has been complied with and we have a work order with the resident signature that we put in her smoke detectors on Wednesday.
Okay, terrific. Sounds like we can have a quick turn on that then. It looks like you might have another case. So if you want to hang on for just a second, I'll complete the ruling on this one and we'll move to the next one. I rule in case CE two one zero one five six four two, that based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant seven days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $150 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Number eighteen, case number CE two one oh one five seven eight eight. The owner is Pacifica Bayou LLC, one oh three oh five Zachary Circle, and this one is I can't read what's on the agenda there, but it's Zachary Circle Apartment one ninety seven. And we have service. And if you could state your name and address for this case?
Julia Martinez. The address is ten zero three zero five Zachary Circle, Riverview, Florida, three three six seven eight.
Thank you, and you are still under oath.
Excellent. Officer?
Code Enforcement Officer Leon Sallor, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Property in question is located at one zero three two three Zachary Circle Apartment one ninety seven, Riverview, Florida, and is owned by Pacifica Bayou LLC. Property is not in foreclosure. Property was first inspected on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. It was cited for ceilings and doors. As of my last inspection on February eighth of this year, the only violation that remained was the door. Apparently during the doors, you can see there's a big gap between the door frame and the top of the door.
There's strip issue, okay. Ms. Martinez?
Actually need a couple more days.
Thought you were going to say it's done and we could come take a look. We were doing so well after the first one.
No, we just have to replace the whole door completely.
I understand. No problem. How long, how much time do you need to get it done?
At least fourteen.
Okay, all right. Any concerns, Officer, with the 21 day?
No, sir.
Okay. I move in case CE two one zero one five seven eight eight, that based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 21 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $150 per day. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. You did a great job subbing in today. Have a great weekend. Next case, please.
Page eleven, number twenty one, case number CE two zero zero one five five four five. The owner is Doris M. Etchison, twenty three oh two Lloyd Drive. We have service. Can someone lower the podium? Will it go down or?
Thank you.
Okay, now that one doesn't go.
We could have her move it over to the table. That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address.
I'm Carol Etchison Boeckel, twenty two sixteen Lloyd Drive, Ruskin, Florida, three three five seven zero.
And you were, how are you related to Doris?
I'm her daughter. I have power of attorney also, so.
You're okay to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you recognize the property in the photo?
Oh, yeah, it's a mess.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Officer.
Good morning. I'm Officer Watson with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This is, uh, two three oh two Lloyd Drive, Ruskin, Florida, three three five seven zero. The initial inspection was on ten thirteen, twenty twenty, with one violation of accumulations. Um, with, there's in the front yard, there's a couch there, and there's also a lot of accumulations underneath the carport, such as plywood appliances and different debris.
Same amount of accumulation since the initial violation? Anything's changed in the last?
I wasn't there for the initial violation, um, but I was looking back at the prior photos and it looks about the same.
Okay, all right.
It's actually a little worse right now.
Uh-oh, all right, ma'am. What would you, what would you like to tell me?
Um, honestly, that chair, somebody was supposed to come get it and they didn't, so we shoved it there for now. It, we really don't have any excuse. Things have been really crazy. I'm disabled, obviously. My husband's legally blind and things tend to get away from us. By the way, the laundry there was just waiting for us to take with us to get to the laundry bed, but yes, um, we've, it's just been a crazy year. Things have been really bad and all I can say is if you can give us 30 days, we'll have it cleaned up.
Okay, all right. Any life safety violations or concerns here?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, ma'am. Due to your, due to the outstanding circumstances, and it has been a crazy year, I'm going to give you 60 days to get this completed, so. Have a little extra time to get some friends and big strong men to.
Yeah, they didn't want to help last year with COVID, but they started to come in and help, because we also have another case with the house next door, which is my address, and they're starting to come and help a little bit.
Okay, well, terrific. All right, well, hopefully you can get that completed within that time.
Oh, we will.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate you coming out. I rule in case CE two zero zero one five five four five, that based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation of Hillsborough County codes of ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on gravity violations, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 60 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $125 per day be assessed. All right, ma'am, you have 60 days to complete that and the officer will come back out and verify for you. Okay?
We're staying for the next case too, probably.
Sure.
Number twenty two.
Okay.
Number twenty two, case number CE two zero zero one five five four six. The owner is Carol M. Etchison, twenty two sixteen Lloyd Drive. We have service, and Ms. Etchison is here, and you are still under oath. And state your name and address for this case.
Carol Etchison Boeckel, twenty two sixteen Lloyd Drive, Ruskin, Florida, three three five seven zero.
And do you recognize that property? Thank you.
It's even worse, yes.
Go ahead, officer.
Officer Watson with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement for case two zero zero one five five four six is twenty two sixteen Lloyd Drive, Ruskin, Florida, three three five seven zero. Initial inspection was ten thirteen of twenty twenty two with two violations of accumulations, uh, in the yard and overgrowth throughout the property. The property still remains a violation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, again, the same as last time. He actually did start to get to work on this. He got some of the, um, stuff trimmed down and put out to the road. Some of it has to be cut shorter, though he didn't want to take it. Um, he did get a load of stuff taken that was just garbage that was in, up in the front. But, um, then he hurt his back, so we weren't able to complete it. So we will have it completed.
Okay, all right, terrific. Well, I, my, my same comment applies, so I'm going to do 60 days for that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Just in case you come back up, you have the whole block and come back up on here again, so I'm trying to be consistent, so. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I rule in case CE two zero zero one five five four six, that based on the evidence presented, I find the properties in violation. Ma'am, one second, officer, I'd like to speak to you. One moment, ma'am. I rule in case CE two zero zero one five five four six, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation. Further, based on the gravity violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 60 days to come into compliance. Compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $125 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Turn back to page two, number three. And this is a virtual, uh, participant that I just became aware of. Case number CE two thousand one seven four four. The owner is Med Central Corporation. Location seventy one oh eight Cosway Boulevard, and we have service. And do we have someone? Okay. Good morning, sir. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, ma'am.
And state your name and address.
First name, Dancy, D N C Y. Last name, Rivas, R I V A S. My address is twenty nine oh six Bryan Road, Brandon, Florida, three three five one one.
Thank you. And sir, do you, do, can you see the photo and do you recognize that property?
Yes, that's my property. That's my office.
Go ahead, Officer Sallor.
Good morning again. Officer Sallor, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Property in question is located at seven one zero eight Cosway Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, and is owned by Med Central Corporation. Property is not in foreclosure. Property was first inspected, uh, February fifth, twenty twenty, and it was cited for site development review plan required. As of my last inspection on January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, the violation still remain. And basically what it is, is the backyard of the property is being used as a driveway. And in order for them to utilize that property as a driveway, they need to have a site development plan. And as of now, there's nothing I filed. There's no permit or anything. I'll file for it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rivas, what would you like to tell us?
Yes, sir. Uh, what I would like to say is that we have been in this location for forty years. And that property in the back is where the septic tank and the drain field, as well as the pond, retention pond is. There are a few trees and there's access like for five to seven cars, which is usually my employees where they park and it launch if it's a good day. I do not, this is not a drive-through. It's just a lot. I didn't know forty, forty years ago that I needed permit to, to be able to do that.
Okay, sir, I understand. How long will it take you to remove the area or return it to original condition and stop using it as a driveway?
Once more, it's not a driveway. It's just, it have been already, we put metal fence, uh, I can show the photos already. So there's no access no longer for body there, including me, the owner, because I was told as the owner I can park there either.
Okay, I'm sorry. Broke up on that one. I'm not quite sure what you. My question to you, sir, was to, how long will it take for you to get back to the original condition and not use it any longer as a driveway?
My answer is that have been done already. If they look at the photo, they will see that we installed metal fence with the gate, so they, nobody can go to the back.
Oh, okay. So the condition's been resolved. It's not, it's no longer outstanding and the officer can come and take a look.
That's correct, sir. And pictures are available because I saw that you, the officer projected the pictures, uh, just a few minutes ago with the fence, the metal fence.
Okay.
Um, sir?
Officer?
Uh, Stephen Saucer, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Um, I'd just like to expand a little bit on all the, the length of the case. Officer Sallor, Supervisor Wayman and myself all have all performed site visits to the property. The case started back in February of twenty twenty for there was a development going on in the right of way. The backyard is turned, they're slowly turning it into a parking lot, not a driveway. The property is zone CG. The adjacent property is zone residential. They're using the backyard as a, as a parking lot. What they did was initially, the case came to us because they, they filled in the drainage ditch with asphalt millings and a, and a plastic corrugated pipe to use it as entrance into the backyard from the side road. Then, when they were cited for that, they, uh, they also had a notice of violation sent to them from the right of way department to, uh, correct that issue and also to restore the backyard to its original state and/or get approvals through a site plan review for the, the development of a parking lot. None of that has occurred. They, they recently moved, uh, removed the millings out of the drainage ditch. And the, and the corrugated pipe that was in the drainage ditch that they installed, now it's just laying in the backyard along the trees, along the trees, along the, the back property line from when I inspected the property. And that's where it's at. Yeah, um, there's been three different departments involved. Um, stormwater's been involved, right of way department's been involved, and code enforcement has all been involved. And they were issued a notice of violation from the right of way department and from code enforcement. And, um, it's to be restored back to its original condition or to, um, have the approval, um, from the county for it to be a parking lot. And one thing I just want to expand on too is, um, the property is zone CG and the neighboring property is residential, so there is a 20-foot buffer where that, um, that cannot be developed in for, uh, for the neighboring property. So.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rivas, do you under, go ahead, sir. I just want to make sure you understood what the officer said in regards to returning it to the original condition. It sounds like, um, you've got some corrugated pipe that might be there still and, um, you know, that obviously that needs to be removed, uh, otherwise you're going to have an accumulation issue here shortly too, so.
I, I understand, sir. And again, uh, the metal fence will not allow nobody to go to the back as a driveway or parking, so that's not going to happen. There's a fence, metal fence now. And the pipe that can be lifted with the next 10 days and thrown away or, or removed.
Okay, all right, terrific. Uh, officer, any concerns or questions about doing a 14-day turn here for a reinspection?
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, please?
Are you guys okay with doing a 14-day turn for a reinspection on this? He said he can have the corrugated pipe and materials removed in the next 10 days.
That's fine. I mean, we could do an inspection. I, it is, I just want to make sure that we're perfectly clear about what the corrective action is. Um, there's fence gates that he has installed for access for egress and ingress into the backyard. All of that has the, the, the backyard cannot be used for a parking lot or a driveway or anything like that without an approved site plan.
That's correct. I understand that.
Okay, so, I mean, so in other words, there's no purpose to have double, double gates going to the backyard now?
I, I defer as the owner and there is also service for the septic tank and they need to get in and out when the septic tank had to be served.
Okay, but there was no fence or gates at all before and they were able to get access. Now that they're installed, there's, the gates are installed right at your egress, ingress to your backyard now for where the cars were parking.
Okay, officer, in regards to the gates and the fencing, that's not currently a violation, so therefore that's not something we can rule on. What we're working on right now is a site development review plan required.
Yes, sir.
It's a testimony of the owner that he's returned the conditions to its natural state minus the corrugated pipe, so he's got a 14-day window to do that and then we'll go back and re, re-inspect and, sir, it's just, I understand, I, I know part of your testimony was that you understood that. I just want to make absolutely clear that it needs to be returned to the original state, um, for them to come back and determine that this is in compliance. So they come back out and something's still amiss, this property will still be in violation. I just want to make sure you understand that.
I understand, sir.
Okay.
I just want to add one thing also. He needs to be familiar that he needs to remove the blacktop that was laid as well. There was blacktop that was laid down.
Okay.
So that has to be removed as well.
Again, just to reinstate one more time, back to the original condition, anything that you've added or changed or developed or improved in any way needs to be removed and back to the way it was before February of twenty twenty.
I understand, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rivas, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rivas, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I rule in case CE 20001744, that based on the evidence presented, I find the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances as listed in staff's presentation. Further based on the gravity of the violation, the action taken by the violator and the violator's history, I grant 14 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $300 per day be assessed. Okay, Mr. Rivas, you have 14 days, they'll come back out, they'll contact you to review and take a look, and make sure that everything's back to normal.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you for signing in, appreciate it, have a great weekend.
You too, bye.
Next case, please.
I believe that clears all of the citizens who have signed in.
Seeing that no one is present in the audience for the remaining cases on the agenda, I will now review the case materials previously provided by county staff. If I find that the property is in violation of Hillsborough County codes or ordinances listed in staff's presentation, my ruling in each case will be based on the evidence presented, the gravity of the violation, the actions taken by the violator and the violator's history, determining the amount of fine that will be assessed. Next case, please.
Page 3, number 5, case number CE 2104596. This case complied February 10, 2022. Page 5, number 9, CE 210193. The owner is Durant Road Land Trust, number 4206, location 4206 Durant Road. We have service, and no one is present.
Donald K. Bowling, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case began on 1/6/2021, involved a complaint of apparently a derelict house. This is actually on the historic list for Hillsborough County. The violations found after five visits, overgrowth, nuisance conditions, unsecured residence, fences, general standards for dwelling, if you look at the house, it is actually tilting to the right away from the chimney, so collapse is probably, I'm not an engineer, but it collapses pretty imminent. And pool sanitation, it has an outside pool, usually is secured, sometimes it isn't, but at the time, excuse me, I referred this, it was, but the pool was jet black, here's unredeemable. And aggravating circumstances perhaps, this is directly across the street from the school, Durant Middle School, and this is a very attractive nuisance for children.
Mulroney Middle School, but yes, I know exactly where it is, so, thank you, officer. Nuisance conditions, unsecured structure, is that doors and entry, is that a...
It's the house.
People have access, easy access here?
Right. At one time, you see a board up there, that's very new, but if you see the screen door is pulled open, the lock is unsecured, the back door is pulled open and secured, you can go throughout the entire house, including upstairs, if you want to risk falling through the floors. So it's totally unsecured.
Okay, thank you. I grant three days for item PM 12.3B, nuisance conditions, unsecured structure, and item R 11.1, general standards for dwellings, and item S 13.5, pool sanitation. Failure to meet the three-day deadline on those will result in a fine of $400 per day in regards to item PM 12.2, overgrowth, and item PM 12.4, fences. I grant 14 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $400 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Number 10, case number CE 2103935. The owner is Sheila P. White, 4013 Clinton Road. We have service, and no one is present.
Donald K. Bowling, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. This case began on, excuse me, it began on 3/25/2021. There have been a total of 10 visits, it's zoned RSC 6. The violations found are accumulations, overgrowth, inoperable vehicles. I did not take these photographs, however, I verified their legitimacy on 2/9/2022, and found them to be accurate and correct. I do request a remaining compliance on that last order. I believe it's gonna be for inops, inoperable vehicles. I did not see one there.
We don't have a picture of the inop? Been corrected? You'd like a remaining compliance for that item only? Yes, yes. My understanding is that as well, so you don't need a separate ruling for that. It's in the body of the motion, understand? I grant 10 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $250 per day be assessed. Next case, please.
Page 6, number 12.
Thank you, Officer Bowling.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 6, number 12, case number CE 2103449. This case complied February 4, 2022. Page 7, number 13, case number CE 2103586. This case is pulled and rescheduled for February 22nd code board hearing. Page 8, number 13, case number CE 2002013132. The owner is Richard Higgins, location 6102 Duncan Road. We have service, and no one is present.
How you doing again?
Super, sir, how are you?
All right. Code Enforcement Officer Leon Sallin, Hillsborough County Code Enforcement. Property in question is located at 6102 Duncan Road, Riverview, Florida, and is owned by Richard Higgins. Property is not in foreclosure. This property was first inspected on September 1, 2020, and it was cited for connection to drainage systems, plumbing fixture defective, sanitation of plumbing fixtures, windows and exterior doors, interior surfaces, and nuisance conditions. I was, so far I've been unable to physically re-inspect, however, I spoke to the tenant yesterday, and she informed me that nothing has been taken care of.
Case outstanding since September of 2020? I grant 14 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $500 per day be assessed. Thanks, sir. Next case, please.
Number 16, case number CE 20015400. This case is pulled per staff. Page 10, number 19, CE 19013749. This case is pulled per staff. Number 20, case number CE 200236. This case has been rescheduled to April 15, 2022 hearing. Page 11, number 23, case number CE 2103041. The owner is Enrique Jimenez Gonzalez and Gabriela Garcia, 2219 Metro Drive. We have service, and no one is present.
Officer Watson with Hillsborough County Code Enforcement, we're here for CE 21003041, which is 2219 Metro Drive, Ruskin, Florida, 33570, with one violation of inoperable vehicles. Currently, there are still inoperable vehicles on the property as of the last inspection. There was a red car with no license, with no registration displayed, and this black one here expired in 2018 of March.
Okay. I grant 21 days to come into compliance. If compliance is not achieved by that date, a fine of $150 per day be assessed.
And that concludes the agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody online, appreciate you coming out today. Have a great weekend.